One-on-one live work session. Today, I am with a dear friend and colleague Vanessa Duplassi. I feel so goofy saying that about you because I say that sometimes, but you really are a dear friend and colleague. And Ness and I are going to talk about stuff. I don't know where we're going. We'll figure it out. I'm going to re-fix my hair. For any of you guys that happen to watch live, I'm just really going to be focusing in on working with Vanessa. I'll check your comments and questions if anybody has any after. And of course, if you watch this at all, I will always respond to your stuff. So, but if you don't see me responding, you need something? Diane@DianeHockman.com. All right, Vanessa, I'm trying to... Okay, there, I have a hair on top of my head, which means I'm ready to work. Where are we going today, Vanessa? What are we doing?
All right, well, I'm excited and I have three areas of discussion.
Yes.
One of them is, and obviously we're friends, so you know my family and you know my kids and you know my hubby and all that. So, one is for, one area is for my husband's marketing. I'll talk about that. The second area is, my dear son finally came to me and said, "Mom, you know, I can't get a job till I'm 16. And I think I want to take this summer to learn a little bit about online." Like, really? Finally? He's watched his sister for the last few years. And his sister, she's like, "Mom, I'm bored with my ecommerce stuff. I want to, I want to change it up. I want to talk about that." And he's like, "Well, I'll do her stuff," kind of thing. So, three areas: hubby, my kids, and then me. And me may be just part of helping them. Because I don't necessarily want to add a third thing necessarily. I'd rather help them get going so they can see the power of what we do. So, Greg, I know you have met with him and chatted with us a little bit about his business stuff. He's got his event analytics business that he's had for about two years. We want to ramp it up. We want to ramp it up and really, he needs marketing. And I've stayed out of it with all my marketing experience. I've kind of just let him do his thing. He's got two people working with him now that are, I'm going to start helping with marketing. I've got a little bit of cycle time right now. Why don't you let me help guide them? I'm ready to step in because I know with my skills, I can help him take it to the next level.
Sure.
So, Leap is the company, L-E-I-P. And if I need to share my screen, I can. The website's kind of, you know, it needs a complete rework. And that's when I was like, I need to talk to Diane.
Do you want to talk about the website or you want to talk about more big pictures?
I want to talk big picture. So, the website, I was like, I could show you the website, but the website doesn't look like what I anticipate it to look like in another 30, 45 days.
Okay.
It's more the message that's going to be on the website. We have two key constituents. One is an event organizer. So, this is a tech play that can parlay itself into anybody who runs events. It doesn't have to be tech event people. Okay? So, he just went up to a cannabis event up in Seattle. So, they can use this technology. And I'll tell you what it does in just a minute. So, two key constituents. One is the event organizer. And then the other is the event participant, the person who rents the 10-by-10 booth and has looked into, hopefully gleaned leads from attending the event and paying and sponsoring or whatever. Okay? So, I'm going to share my screen so that I can make sure this lets me do this. And...
Can you do it on the bottom there?
Yep, I got it. And now where you should see my screen.
Let me see if I can, I see it from here. Oh, there it is. Okay, I had to hit it.
Cool. So, forget about what the website looks like. The reality is this window here. We're dealing with big data. And it's a big buzzword out in the tech world where if you think about all the information that's available to be scraped off of the internet, we can collect that and we can say, "Hey, somebody at XYZ Company is looking at your company based on their search history." Right? We can't tell you the exact person, but we can tell you that someone in the tech department or someone in the events department or someone in the XYZ department is checking you guys out. So, we have pre-event data on potential good leads, right?
Okay.
We also, if you've ever been to a live trade show and you have people walking around with their badges, badges can be scanned, right? There are scanning badges all over the place. So, if somebody stops at your booth and you scan them, we can take that during-event data, this green box here, correlate it back to the pre-event data and give you post-event data. Okay? So, that's, it's just kind of techie, right? The exhibitor, the organizer, and the attendee are the three pools of people.
Right.
So, the gist of what we need to do is we need to educate the organizer and the exhibitor who would buy this data on the value of the data. So, Greg's comment to me was, "Let Diane know our big thing is, it's such a complicated thing. We want to drill it down or dumb it down into like a one-pager that the organizer and the exhibitor, when they're looking at what does Leap do, they go, 'Oh, I get it.'" They spend a lot of time on education, multiple meetings, it's a whole process. We want to speed that up. So, if we look at this wording here, what was that?
I just said, "Yeah, keep going."
If we look at this little bit of wording, this is the dashboard of the products. So, it's the client who buys the data. And they say, "We want to go find our top 25 prospects for this next event that we're going to do." They get this whole techie dashboard so they can see more of the companies, right? So, it's basically like having a data scientist or a data science team within your own marketing, Mr. Exhibitor. We have someone who's going to be able to say, "Here's your top 25 people you should be trying to set appointments with before you get to the event. Or here's the top 50 people you should invite to your party you're going to have," kind of thing, right? So, the challenge is this big, you know, pre-data, post-data, during-event data. It makes like exhibitors' heads kind of spin.
Yeah. And so, I'm listening to it and I'm going, "It needs to be explained in a much simpler way."
Yeah. I'm going to stop sharing the screen for a minute. So, that's what we want is, you know, it's hard to make it simple because you also want to explain what it does because it's super powerful.
Yeah, but marketing, what you want to do is catch them with what they want and bring them down the road. So, we don't want to pour it all into them upfront. It's like a buffet. Somebody walks up and they go, "I'm hungry. I'll have a little of this. I'll have a little of this." They go, they sit down, they eat, and they go, "I'm still hungry." They go back again and so on. What you don't want to do is shove all the food down their throat all at once because it feels forced. It feels too much. And then because you have three different constituents, there really should be a different interface for each one. The exhibitor doesn't need to know what it does for the other people and vice versa. Here. Okay? I mean, this is great. Like, if I'm an exhibitor and I'm going to work this, you know, event in Vegas at the Vegas Convention Center and you have data that can help me to know who to pre-meet with, who to focus on getting to my booth, and who to follow up with, that's valuable to me. I don't care what the event organizer did with it. And I don't care what the, you know, I don't care. All I want is what's for me. And all I keep thinking of is if you're going to, and this is not copy. This is just a theme and a concept. If you're going to spend a lot of money on running or attending an event, don't you want to monetize it for everything it's worth? That's not copy. But that's the gist of it.
Correct.
I'm taking the whole show on the road. I'm sending my guys out there. I'm doing the booth. I'm doing the this. I'm doing the that. I need to make this thing work. I need to make this thing make money. And your data can allow them to hyper-monetize it.
Absolutely.
I like that term, "hyper-monetize." Have you ever seen anybody say that before? I'm sure somebody has, but I like it.
I haven't, but I'm just writing that down.
I want to write that down, yeah.
So, yeah, so you... That's exactly what the value is.
Oh, 100%. Because most people go, "I'm going to go to this thing and I'm going to get rich." Or I'm going to, or my company, I'm going to launch my company. I'm a startup. I'm going to go to this show and I'm going to get tons of orders. And this is that. And they have no idea who's even going to be at the event. They have no idea who their competitors are at the event, which is also reconnaissance data is valuable as well. You know, who's on the field? You know, who else has what going on? Also, from a corporate standpoint, I would think the networking aspect of it is valuable too, knowing data on all these other companies. Because sometimes the guy that's working for that other company ends up being the best prospect for your company later. Which is not the purpose of going to the show, but it's a secondary and tertiary value of being around and networking with people. So, I think we have to first focus in on what are the core desires of the three different groups?
We really only have two. We're not worried about the attendee. We have the exhibitor and then we have the organizer, the event, who can pre-sell this to their exhibitors.
Okay, and they're making a cut of it.
They make a cut of it, yeah. And they want their exhibitors to be happy because then their exhibitors keep coming back and sponsoring and paying and all that.
Right, right. So, not only are they making money from having this as part of their technology, but they're also reselling over and over and over to have people keep coming. Great. So, have you guys sat down and gone through in your mind all the desires of the event organizers and all their headaches? You know them inside and out. Have you really, really, really gotten in their head?
I think, again, I've stayed out of it kind of for the last two years. So, that is a great question for me to bring back to Greg. I mean, I believe he's done some of that, but probably none of the depth that could be done.
Well, because when you write copy or you present that, like, if we want to streamline this down and make it simple so that somebody can understand it, so they want another bite, it has to hit them in the conversation that's already going on in their head.
For sure. That's marketing, yeah.
So, some event people, it's, "I got to fill the damn event. I already paid for the space. My event's not filled." Some event people, it's more like, "How do I, how do I structure this in the best way possible to make the most money?" Some of the people are, "How do I," you know, there's all different concerns of these event folks. And then additionally, their data from their event is sellable. You know, if they're actually keeping data, which a lot of people are in a data-driven age, which I've been...
We can take their last event and run it through our system and provide information back.
Yeah, yeah. And/or they can decide, like lists, you know, people that own lists for years have sold their list. They might decide they want to sell their database of people to some other entity or share it or do a cross...
Cross-promotion.
You know, if it's the same industry. And/or even if they're not the same industry, somebody who runs shows, their data on what types of things people buy could be valuable to other vendors that are not running shows. So, I just look at all of this. When Greg first talked to me about it, I just looked at all the angles. And how do I explain this? Vanessa, imagine, remember in elementary school in the gym, they'd have like a circle on the floor or around, okay? Imagine Leap is in the center of the, the center of the circle, okay? The software. What we have to do is walk around the circle and see it from every perspective of every potential person in order to communicate it well. Very often what happens is we're seeing it from our perspective. Like, if I'm the technical guy, I'm seeing it from a technical perspective. Well, I'm not technical, so I'm looking at it from a completely different angle. And we have to get good at every point on that circle. We have to be able to see the advantages of our product and also the holes in the marketplace. You know, where does this not exist? Because I don't know what other players are on the field that do event data. So, without seeing that or knowing what other people are selling, because the message has to cut through the noise. Right? So, if there are 20 companies that sell event data, well, why should I listen to you? If there's no companies that do what you guys do, then that's a whole different story. You're...
We don't know of any that does it, does what we do. There are people that will sell snippets, but nobody does the full package yet.
Right.
Because it's hard to harness. It's so, you know, we have some great technical people that have been able to help us harness that.
So, knowing what's out there, the copy and the communication needs to communicate without disparaging anybody. There are holes in what you're, like, for example, the scanning badges. You know, it's new. It's fairly new. And people are using it to some extent, but not to the full extent.
Right.
Maybe they're using it just to get in and out the door, but they haven't considered that at booths, booths can do giveaways or something based upon the scan. And that data goes right into their system instead of trying to collect names and emails and phone numbers. You know, I can think of like 20 different reasons why you can use the scanner. You know, is that data being used properly? I think the pre- and post-data is something that's probably missing. I think that, and I'm guessing because I'm not...
It's been a big search in the conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah. And you also know that I'm like one of these weird people that sees stuff even though I'm not in the middle of it. And then I go back and I look and I research and I go, "Well, there it is." Pre-data, like, I'm a pre-data person. I never attend an event, and I don't do big trade shows or anything, but I never attend an event without scanning who will be there. Who are the, who are the other speakers? In my case, it's different than, you know, I would look for the other booths if there's a listing. And I would also be searching the internet without a scraper, without the technology to figure out who's going. Well, like, as they were getting on their planes or people talking about it, I'd check the hashtag. So, I always walk in the door completely prepared and advised about who's going to be there. And I already have in my mind who are the most valuable connections. So, I'm doing what your software does at a very rudimentary baby level. I think that a lot of people don't even realize that that is available. And again, I'm not on a corporate level and I don't have a, you know, IT department or something. So, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe on a corporate level, that's the way they think. But I think a lot of these startups and smaller companies that are coming to trade shows to just break through, I don't think they're thinking like this at all. I also am not sure whether the event planners have really thought about the cash value of the data from an event. So, communicating that, we have to figure out what's their biggest driver. If their biggest driver is to turn a bigger profit from the event, you know, turn, turn, toss away data into more revenue quickly, easily, and seamlessly or something like that could be a catchphrase. What they think is not important data, a presentation can show them how much more money an event could bring in. What an attendee or like an exhibitor thinks is just like a list or a booklet of what, you know, you get a booklet of what booth is where at a big trade show. Well, they probably don't realize the amount of information that's available to them about the population that's at the event, the population that's exhibiting, the competitive, you know, aspect of it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And especially if the event owner used those badges and everybody was running something special when you scanned your badge at a booth. If everybody could see who stopped at what's booth, at whose booth and what was bringing people in, the strategic value of that intelligence would be very high, I think.
Right, right. No, you're hitting everything that I know Greg has, you know, talked about and that kind of thing. So, once the recording's done, I am going to have him go back and listen to part of it as well.
So, Vanessa, a question. What have they done on a, from a sales standpoint so far?
It has all been Greg just getting out there through connections that he knows and meeting organizers and going to events. He just brought on at the beginning of the year, two salespeople, for lack of a better term, who are working on exposure. And they're just coming up to speed on really what the technology does. You know, he knows it and how because he helped create it with our developer. So, they have a couple of really big potential accounts on the line where, you know, one of these event organizers does, you know, 30, 40 events a year. And if he can get them to resell it, so to speak, or use it within their events, that's pretty big. And what we've found is that just trying to get people to understand the value, you know, it's like, "Oh, it's kind of a nice to have." And it's like, "No, no, it really isn't need to have if you want..."
So, right now, what we're doing is we're breaking the cardinal rule of marketing. What we're trying to do is convince or explain people that what we have is good as defining something they want.
Yep. And that's why I'm jumping in to see how we can change that message.
Right. So, you have something they want. You're just probably, Greg's just probably either over-explaining it or he's too in love with the parts of it that he loves, that he wants them to see the thing he loves. And the truth is, nobody cares. And I'm not saying that to be rude. We have to find out what it is they want and show them that our software does that. And then let them discover as we go along, "Oh, my gosh, it does this too. It does this too. It does this too." We have to sell based upon what they want, not based upon how cool it is or how wonderful it is. Cardinal rule. So, if we're getting into too much explaining, the message isn't on point. Because people would want it first and get it explained later if the message were on point. They would be lunging. So, it has a lot to do with getting in their head and then presenting it in a way that they're like, "Oh, my God. Oh, my God, I need to meet with this guy. Oh, my God." So, we need to know every pain point they have.
Okay. I will get them to brainstorm on all of that. We can, we can start there.
Okay. And the explaining comes as like, you know, we joke, because I'm in the home business industry. I recruit people all the time. They don't even know, like, nobody ever asked me, "What's the pay plan? What's the this? What's the that? What are the ingredients? You know, how much money?" Any of those things? Nobody ever asked me. And the reason why is because my marketing hits them right in the gut where it's like, "I need this." And then the questions come later, but they've already paid, you know? And that's what we want. We want to sign contract. Okay, now let's sit down with the team and plan out for this event. As to, and yes, in corporate, and it's a lot of money they're spent, they're, obviously, they're doing their own expense spending time. And it's a bad comparison, but it's a true comparison. We buy shoes based upon, "Oh, my God, they're so hot." We don't think about later that your feet might hurt. Well, you and I do, but everybody else, you know? Shoes is, it's a bad example because you and I actually really think about our feet. But clothing, this is and that. Cars, you know, like, people will buy a car because it's beautiful. And then they get in, they realize they don't like the position of the cup holder, you know? Unless somebody's really a green type and then they're calculating all that stuff. And most people are buying on impulse. Most people are buying based on frustration. And that's what we have to do is figure out what are all the event planners frustrations? And I really think the key here is to show them the monetization of their data that they already have. You already have this information. It's sitting at your event. You just don't know how to utilize it and our software will take it and turn it into money for you. That's, from my gut, without having a lot of information, that's where, that's where I think that every company wants to make more money. Every shareholder wants a bigger dividend. So, having headlines to the effect of, "Hyper-monetize your successful event." Or, "Take your event to a whole nother level in revenue." That's not good copy, but, but that's the gist. It's revenue-based, I would think. Because one, and you have more than one revenue option here because the revenue of selling this to attendees is one thing. But the revenue from the data itself, because the data would ever be able to tell a business organizer how to charge people more next time. Would tell them what spots to charge a premium for. There are certain spots in the convention hall that are premium. And if you add traffic data because people were scanning and you could literally see that one booth gets three times more traffic than another, you could charge two times more for it. There's so many different ways that all the information that you have, the pre-event data and being able to market into populations that are more likely to come to your show, especially with, if you scrape data and then use it for Facebook ads, you know, look-alike audiences and all the different things that we can do today that we couldn't do before. It's highly targeted hyper-monetization. That right there, highly targeted hyper-monetization. I got to Google that.
I love it.
And the key here is to talk about the fact that this has never been possible before. There's been lots of companies that can talk about who attends events. There's been companies that could talk about this. There's been companies that could talk about that. And all of that information is great, but there's never been one solution that you can run your data through that would give you highly targeted hyper-monetization, both for you and for your exhibitors. That's sexy.
That's hot.
Sexy right there.
That's hot. I can't, I can't wait to share this.
Because that's, that's, that's what they want. And then the details of how it's done, see, it doesn't matter how it's done. What matters is it can do it. Can you say with conviction, "This will give you a hyper-targeted, highly targeted hyper-monetization. It's going to take the event to a whole nother level, both before the event and after the event. And it's going to serve your exhibitors and make more people want to exhibit with you because you're using the newest technology to give them more revenue." Because that's what they want. When people are deciding whether or not to exhibit, they're deciding it's going to be a moneymaker.
For sure.
Well, if they can spend a couple bucks more and have this whole functionality that's going to allow them to have all of this information and send a couple guys into town beforehand and meet with certain people beforehand or, you know, whatever the case may be, or preset, you know, times with people or get more people to the events simply because of having that, that info. Your Venn diagram, put that back up again, Vanessa.
Hold on, let me go. Back to find it.
This is very interesting. Now, see, this is my problem whenever I do stuff like this with people. I want to learn all about that field now.
You need something else?
It's not up.
Oh, it's not up?
Yeah, this, I think turned off.
There it is.
There we go. What does it say below? Scroll down slightly.
The name of the products of Live Event Intelligence Platform.
Okay, what did it say above it? Because it says, "Now you can." What?
This is just, wouldn't, would you like to be, wouldn't it be easier to...
Yeah. You need, you're going to need a professional copywriter at some point, but you have to have your message together in order to engage one. Let me see the Venn diagram one more time. I encourage you guys to consider using some words like intelligence, reconnaissance, even quay that this is like, almost like spying. It's that good. Okay? You want to sexy it up and show a little leg with it. Data does not sound exciting. Now, you need to use the word "data" because it is data. But if you...
I like a pre-event reconnaissance kind of thing.
Pre-event reconnaissance, having intelligence on who will be there, when they will be there. It needs to sound compelling. I mean, unless you're selling to strictly data people. If you, I mean, if you're selling...
No, not at all. It's to the marketing people. It's to the organizer of the event. It's, you know, they're not, that's the challenge of it, they're not data people.
The organizer of the event wants to make more money and have their event be the talk of the town.
Yep.
The organizer, and they will utilize data in order to use that. But data is not what turns them on, right? What will happen when they use the data is what excites them. See, same with me. I have no data, great. But if I use data to make more money, if I use data to be more well-known, if I use data and intelligence, I always call it intelligence. Can you imagine being able to provide your exhibitors with intelligence that about, with intelligence about attendees and buyers that they never before thought was accessible? Again, I'm speaking out loud. This isn't copy crafted copy. But your vendors would be beating down the door to be, to get booth space. Sellouts would be imminent. Because simple data that wasn't accessible before now can be taken to give your, to give your vendors, or whatever you call them, exhibitors, highly targeted hyper-monetization of your event. And let's face it, when your, when your exhibitors make money, you make money, lots of it, and you sell at every future event before you even get started. That's the kind of sexy shit.
Yeah. I like it.
That makes sense?
I like it a lot. I think it's a great starting point and I will get... I like it a lot. I think it's a great starting point, and I will get them working on that kind of stuff. And then I agree on the copywriter, because I didn't write any of the copy. Greg's not a copywriter. He wrote mostly copies.
Information, what you have is information.
Yes, exactly.
There is copy.
Exactly.
Information is important. Information should be in the slide. The, the, the beginning of like, if he, if he does a slide deck presentation or something, the beginning should be painting the picture in super sexy, and then we break down, okay. Now, I'm gonna get a little nerdy and have some fun. I'm gonna get a little nerdy, and I'm gonna show you how this, this data-driven solution works. Bottom line, hang with me through this, because by the time I'm done, you're gonna see dollar signs, and you're gonna understand what this could do for your event. So we, we have to show them. But what we have to do is sandwich it in the, in the middle, sexy, info, sexy. Because you gotta hook them and catch them before you show them what it does. Because nobody cares what it does until they, they know the promise. That make sense? You know, if, if, it's like me, you know me, I'm not technical, and you're technical. I can learn anything. You've watched me do it. If the promise is leverage, or the promise is more money, or more of what I want, I'll discipline myself, and I will sit down and I will learn it. But until I'm convinced of the promise, ain't no way, no how, I'm on a need-to-know basis, I don't need to know how to do that. As soon as the promise is there, like I recently learned a, a tool that allows me to build membership sites and stuff. I didn't want to do it, and then I went inside because I, the promise was so good that it was worth doing. And then I was like, this wasn't that hard. It's the story that we're telling ourselves that keeps us from going somewhere. So if the promise is powerful enough, we'll sit through the information. And, and it's just like kids. How do you get them to sit down? There's a promise, right? And then it gets them to sit down and learn something. Nobody ever sat down and said, you know, I want to do my homework. But everybody wants to do their homework if they get to do something on Saturday.
Right.
Everybody wants to do their homework if they're gonna get a gold star, whatever it may be, for each kid. And all your buyers are just big kids. We all are.
I love that.
True. So, and on this, or do you want to talk about?
I'm good on this. I think that's all excellent places for us to start. Like I said, we'll continue the conversation, I'm sure. But I'd love to switch over to what the kids and I do. So my couple of ideas are the following, so. Annalee has had her store up for, since she was like eight.
And we always Store, or what kind of store?
An Etsy, an Etsy store.
Etsy, okay.
Etsy, she does wine charm, she does jewelry. She, we, we usually do a push at Christmas is kind of when we do our big push, and then we back off. And she makes stuff over the summer, and we push for Christmas, and so it's not a year-round thing at this point. Yeah, but she started when she was eight, and she's 12 now, and she's like, mommy, I'm kind of bored doing that, so I want to, I want to add, I want to do different stuff. So I just got her a candle-making kit, so she can learn about candles. We talked, we looked at, you know, lip balm stuff, we looked at, we're looking at other stuff. The other side of it is Alex used to help. And, you know, and now he's kind of like bored with that, but he's interested in the process, because he's seen her make, he's watched her make money.
Right.
So I was looking at some gamer stuff. There's a bunch of gamer print-on-demand stuff that we could do that I know he can sell to his buddies. He's a huge gamer. Whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, he, you know, plays a lot, you know, there's, he, he spends, you know, twenty, twelve hours a day on weekends, just like leveling up and doing this, and all the social stuff. And like, he has aspirations of being in the next, you know, fifteen months, what he was telling me, top one hundred in this one particular game. I'm like, that's his goal. That's his thing. The other side of him is he's a very big sports kid. He knows stats, he knows players, he knows all that stuff. So I was contemplating showing him how to do a small, like ecommerce print-on-demand for clothes, for stuff that teenagers buy. He's always like, hey mom, I want to buy this. Mom, I want that sweatshirt. Mom, you know, I want that pop socket. Mom, you know, can you buy me this? I really think that's a good potential little avenue for him to start.
Sure.
So I want to talk about that in just a second. So for the girl child, she's more on the personal care type items.
Sure.
So I believe I need to keep them separate. They need to be two separate.
I would.
What?
I would keep them separate.
So one is, you know, the foo-foo a little bit, you know, the other one is going to be total gamer oriented. One of the questions I was looking at is, though she's on Etsy, and I believe she should stay on Etsy. That's fine. For a gamer site, I was looking on Etsy, and there's a bunch of stuff that you can get on Etsy, because it's really about the marketing and the promotion and getting your links in front of people to buy. I was contemplating throwing up a, a small ecommerce site with a URL of its own related to gaming. But I want to make it easy for him to be able to eventually manage. You know, I could throw the ecommerce site up pretty quick on a Shopify or a WooCommerce or, or whatever. And then, but Etsy's also really easy.
Etsy, let me ask you a question, because I haven't really been on Etsy in a while. My kids used to be into it. Isn't it more like girl-oriented?
I, I really think it is, and that's why I'm struggling with it. It, it, it isn't, it isn't. There are more, it's being used more as a like craft homemade goods search engine.
Exactly. That's why I think of it as more
I think of it more as female oriented. I think putting a, a site together for him that's totally guy oriented, that then it's just about marketing. But the challenge is, as Etsy gets a lot of organic search traffic, putting up a site is all about driving the traffic.
But you can consider Amazon, which lots of people are using successfully to sell.
True. I hadn't thought of that. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so Amazon has that built-in traffic, et cetera.
You're right.
Certainly can get, you know, use, you know, print-on-demand stuff. You also certainly can do dropship stuff, you know, from China, all sports-oriented, or gamer-oriented, or whatever, anime, or any of this stuff that and then, yeah, and then you can do a Shopify store, but then, again, it's traffic. And, and the concern of getting traffic. Amazon, you have to get the reviews, you have to do, you know, there's a lot of things to do over there. I'm sure Etsy's similar.
And I'm just starting down this path. I think the gamer sport side of, you know, selling is the, the good fit for him.
Sure, because it's stuff he wants. I mean, if he's selling stuff that he would have bought anyway, like cool shirts and, you know, whatever, I think it's really good. The other option too is simple, a simple Facebook store, using Facebook Marketplace, and, you know, I don't know if you've looked into it at all.
I haven't.
Tons of people are doing like fun shirts and stuff like that. And then, of course, it's very easy to target different populations with that type of stuff.
Okay, I didn't even know about that. I, that's, I've heard of it, but not, not at any
Let me show you. And again, this isn't, whoops, I'm hitting the wrong button. This isn't my arena per se, but certainly can kind of mess with a couple things.
You know enough to help me be dangerous.
Exactly. Hmm, where's? Marketplace on the desktop. I know exactly where it is on my phone, because it comes up at me all the time. This is friend request, right? It's, oh, Marketplace, there it is. Because I'm constantly seeing stuff in here that are cute t-shirts and things. In fact, the other day I took a screenshot of one of them, because it was so amusing.
And Facebook integrates with Instagram, and a lot of the teens are on Instagram, so, yeah.
People can get paid via Facebook itself, which is nice, because Facebook has the payment option. So when I go in here, you know, I mean, there's a cat bed, apparently they know I have a cat, I don't know. Makeup brushes, you know, yada, yada. I'm, I'm imagining that everybody sees different things based upon who they are and what they search and look at. I don't know, because I haven't sat and looked at other people's, but look at this five-pack mystery deal men's t-shirts. You know, sometimes here, I, I, uh, this is one. That's what I do. I grill and I know things, you know? Because it's Fourth of July time or whatever, there's, there's, you know, pool things and stuff that people are buying now. I Love America t-shirt. But I've seen some of them that have really cute phrases and fun stuff.
I have access to a lot of great gaming designs through, I, I, I know how to source stuff. So to a decent extent, and I found a lot of great, that's when I was like, okay, maybe that is the, I found a lot of great gamer oriented items.
Now, I'm gonna give you a kooky angle that occurs to me. You can try selling to the kids, but I would target their moms and grandmothers.
That's what I was thinking, is mom's gonna buy Johnny Boy a shirt for Christmas, a stocking stuffer. I would, that was really what I had in my head. He can sell to his buddies. But I'm thinking it's, you know, me, mom who's got to buy for the boy.
And, and you target them, and you say, you know, teenage gamer favorite. Stuff like that, that makes it good, because every mother and grandmother and aunt is wandering around going like, like I have an eighteen-year-old nephew. What do you buy him? I don't think, I am, you know? And, and it's always hard, especially with boys. So I think the biggest spying market for these dudes is not them.
I agree.
You know, he could do some things to sell to them, but I think, um, I, I think you just have to explore the, the, the different platforms and figure out which one is going to be better. But Facebook has built-in traffic. I mean, I use Messenger on Marketplace all the time. I started looking at Marketplace. I also use Groupon and stuff like that, which does local, you know, different deals and things like that. I started looking at Facebook Marketplace when I went to move, believe it or not, I was looking for a property to move to. And that's when I got into looking at Marketplace. But now, every time I see notifications, it comes up, and I just, I'm always looking to see what somebody's selling. I'm actually considering selling some of my stuff on it. I've been too lazy to do it. And also Sarah might get her own place at some point soon, so I've been looking at price points of, you know, rentals. I'm always looking at, I bought some home decor stuff, you know, this is like the alternative to tag sales now.
Right, right.
One, you have local people selling stuff, but then you also have a lot of commercial stuff in here. In fact, it's become very commercial with a lot of boosted offers.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, I just, the built-in traffic was what I was thinking about. So that, those are a couple of great avenues. And then for
And you know, I mean, I'm through, and I see a very exciting tiara for twenty-five dollars. So I think, see, this is what happens. You get I don't have one with red knit, Vanessa.
No, that's, I know, that's good. That's good for Christmas.
This could be mine. So, see what happens? You're just like, you're like, ooh, what are they, what's that? Oh, my nephew likes that game. Oh, why not?
Right, right. Okay, so cool. So you're, I'm, I'm, that's good. Let's talk girl child. So one of the things I was looking at too, and I know you've heard of the concept of either white label or private label.
Yeah, of course.
She can't produce as fast as we might want.
Sure.
So that's part of the limitation on how well her store has done over the last few years. And I haven't pushed, and she's busy with sports. She got other outside activities, because she's a care, right? You know, this isn't her, her livelihood yet. I was contemplating looking at some white label or private label personal care products. They've got some great candles. We can re-label. They are great. You know, bath bombs, there's lip bums, there's just items that would fit nicely within her store. And it's, I've, I've, I've got friends who privately label food and do all kinds of that stuff. But part of me is, I have this little, I need a mindset shift. It's kind of cheating to me.
Um, well, is it or isn't it? I mean, it depends on the nature of the site, and it depends on the nature. I mean, if you're, if you're saying these are all handcrafted by Annalee, then, then that's cheating.
Sure, sure.
These are some of the products that I make myself and others that I just absolutely love that I've hand-selected for you. Why not? Like, like my friend Marty and his wife Mary Jo, they produce bath bombs, and they sell them in all different stores. They're somebody that you could, you know, do a deal with, or whoever, different things. So if she packages it, and it's written, like, hi, I'm Annalee, and blah, 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 blah. On my breaks from school, I make all these different things, and then I've also selected some things that I absolutely love, and I wanted to share with you.
Actually, that's interesting, because I've done that, because we've done some print-on-demand shirts, which she doesn't make. You know, they're, they're print-on-demand, so she's not making them, but it says, I've sourced these designs for you, kind of thing.
Yeah, like if she comes up with a design, or she finds different things that she thinks she'll like. It's like being a buyer for your, you know, like a Macy's buyer. I know what my department is, I know what people like, I'm gonna go out and find the things. And if you want to make some of them, great, you know, if you can't make them all, it, it's just the way it's presented. You know, it's just the way, I, I, I think if you're trying to pass it off that you sat around all day and made all this.
No, yeah, and I wouldn't do that, so.
But if you passed it off as, you know, I was making bath bombs myself, and then I smelt the ones from this company and fell so in love with them, I had to bring them to, to my store. You know, there's lots of places like that that people make handcrafted. If you go to any given craft show and look at any given booth, probably about half the stuff they make and half the stuff they import.
They source.
Yeah, or maybe they make the metal part, and then they bring in the glass, or maybe they, you know. I don't think it's, it's funky as long as you're not making it funky. Does that make sense?
That, that was what I needed to hear, because I was looking at it, and I'm like, it's cheap, and you can resell it, and
Things that come to me, and they want me to help them with creating their messages on their blogs and stuff. I don't build the blogs. We have a team in the Philippines that builds the blogs. I never pretend I build the blog, but I help them create, like, what color should it be? What should it say? What, you know? How does it feel? You know, what's the brand message? Like, you know, I don't create your software, you know? But I could sit here and give you some angles on how to market the software. So why not say, these are, you know, a few of my favorite things?
And that, that's how I had positioned it for the other stuff that we've sourced. So, okay, that's cool, because I think that, because I know how to help her market and get her wares in front of more people. We just haven't had enough wares that I don't market it so much, because we'll sell out really quick.
Sure.
And she's like, she, she came, and she's like, I'm bored, I'm ready, but I want to scale.
But then I think that's cool, because then having her actually learning about sourcing, about white labeling or private labeling, about potentially importing, these are like really cool things for a kid to learn, you know? Dropshipping, all of these different concepts and ideas. I mean, if she walks into, you know, her adulthood, having some concept of these things, it's powerful.
I agree.
Powerful. And I think it's even cooler than just her making some stuff. I mean, her making something and selling it is great. And I, I don't mean this snotty, I mean this very sincerely, it's very nineteen seventy-eight. Do you know, I make bracelets, and I'd sell them out, you know, by my house, or having lemonade set. But today, because of the internet and because of communication, a kid can do some really cool stuff, so I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I mean, if you can make lemonade, that's great, but if you could get some kind of exotic, you know, whatever lemonade from you know, from some cool country, like from Maui or something. And you can sell it, because you found it on your vacation, and you brought it back to, you know, Kenosha. Why not? That's cool. It's exotic.
I like it. I like it. That was the script flip I needed.
That's cool.
Awesome. All right. Then I'm just gonna
By the way, just before you say the next thing, I love that you're doing this with your kids. And I wish more people realized how you know, it used to be with us, we'd go and your mom would, we had bank accounts at school, and you'd get a dollar a week, and you'd put it in the bank account, and you learned how to have a bank account, and you learned what interest was. Well, society is so much more sophisticated today. This is the new version of that. And, and it's neat. It's really, and learning about profit and profit margins, and, you know, very cool.
Well, and that's what I'm excited. My kids, they both said to me this weekend, you know, why don't, again, being, having taught middle school for the last few years. They're like, why don't we get taught how to have, you know, money and deal with banking and deal with real-life type stuff in school? And I'm like, you know, they used to do that, we just don't do it as much anymore. It's, you know, my responsibility, you know, your parents' responsibility.
We're still educating kids to be factory workers in the factories.
Exactly. And so
Parents don't take the initiative, their kids get lost, so good for you.
Exactly. So this is my last piece of the puzzle. I, I am very busy. I've got the kids. I want to help them get going, because that's important to me at this stage in their career. There's this thought I've had for years, and I have access to content. But it's not fun. Okay, so I'm gonna just say, this is not fun for me yet. It could be fun for me. My goal is about having fun right now. I want to have fun with this. I want to make some money, but I want to have fun. It's got, it's my extra time spent, these, my cycles need to be fun. I'm not looking for anything. I have to push the, the boulder up the hill. But I've got this idea. I have access and having a teaching background to this financial literacy course for teens.
Okay.
I know I could build out a product, and I know I could build out a funnel around it, but it weighs heavy on me, because I just go, ugh, so I'm not, it's not fun yet. But there's such a need for, I, I ran across this site called adulting.com, where it's these thirty-something women that are teaching twenty-somethings how to actually be adults.
And is this the one that has like really simple things, like how to do your laundry?
Yes, yes.
Part of it, yeah.
And I just, I cracked up when I saw that, and I thought, okay, fine, she's, they're reaching the twenty-something market. And I just, I cracked up when I saw that, and I thought, okay, fine, she's, they're reaching the 20-something market. Who's reaching our teenagers? You know, for the summer, my son's doing dishes. He's learning how to make basic, you know, good food items for himself, you know? They, they have to learn this stuff. And so after watching what I've seen in school, there's such a big need for it. I don't, I don't have the, the big heart desire, but just speaking about that whole teaching kids how to make a profit, and teaching kids how to manage money, and teaching kids how to build a business. I taught business club for three years. That is fun for me. So like, I just light up different from like the financial education, but I still, if anybody's, you know, paying attention, there's a great need for helping our, our kids, because parents, a lot of parents don't have the time, and a lot of parents don't have the knowledge.
Can I make a suggestion to you?
Yeah.
Unless you need to monetize it right now, I would do this for the joy of it and build a list. I would do videos. I would do, you know, different things, like especially, maybe even document what you're doing with the kids this summer, you know, and do it like a reality type of thing. And build a list, and don't try to build the big funnel and all this other stuff right now. Maybe start a YouTube channel. And, and have some fun with it, because your time with the kids is limited.
Right.
I know super well how fast, high school goes so fast, it's stupid.
We just finished freshman year. I've got three years left, and as soon as driving hits, forget about it.
And it goes super fast. So unless you need to monetize it immediately out of the gate, I would build an audience and communicate with that audience. Build a YouTube channel and build a newsletter, perhaps, or whatever, Instagram, whatever channel.
Yeah.
Um, and I would have a good time with it, and I would connect with other people that are doing similar things, or talking about these ideas, and, and, and have community. And then when the time is right, you know, then you turn around and you come out with the course. Then you turn around and come out with this.
I like that, because then I don't feel like I, so part of my challenge is, I've had this idea for years to want to do this. But again, you know, I like the idea of building that audience for when I'm ready, and I won't feel like I didn't, I missed out, or I wasted three years. Why didn't I start sooner? Or that kind of thing.
Optimal time too, because you're literally doing it with your kids now. Give it a couple of years, and the kids are gonna be gone.
Right, right.
And you'll have a lot of, believe me, it gets really quiet. It's very weird. You know, and people tell you that it's coming, and you think, oh, I can't wait until it's quiet, or I can't wait until, you know, second day of summer vacation, mom, I'm bored. I would give my eye choose to have a child, two children sitting around here going, mom, we're bored. What are we gonna do today? So doing this now, I wish, you know, video wasn't as big at the time period. I wish I had documented more about what it was like to have a home business and have the kids around, how I managed my day, all that type of stuff. So documenting, you know, figuring out, you know, what kind of store do we want to build for Alex? What kind of products do we want to carry? What might be the most profitable? Do we want to go with just stuff we love and do it for fun, or do we want to go with stuff that we know are proven sellers? What are we doing with the money once we earn it? You know, are we blowing it on Saturday night on video games, or are we investing it, or is it a percentage? How are we? That type of stuff, we'll build an audience. It was, I was recently listening to an audiobook, and for the life of me, I can't tell you whose it was. And it was, oh, it might have been Crushing It versus Crush It, Gary Vaynerchuk, newer book, and it was about a dad and his son, and they did experiments or something, and they did all these videos. And overnight, it turned into this huge thing. It was just something fun that, you know, dad and son were doing together, and the next thing you know, they had this huge audience, and then he was able to monetize it and, you know, leave his job and stuff. But the story was cool, because it was never set up to be that. It was just something that they were doing together. So like I said, if you need to make money, then that's a whole different story. We can talk about all that stuff.
No, that's, that's the other stuff. This is more about the experience with the kids.
And if this is something that's just on your heart, but I tell people all the time, go out and serve. Go out, just go out and serve and, and, and do it. And if 20 people watch, it's great. If 2,000 people watch it, if 20,000 people watch it, it's just worth documenting and doing and having fun. And I promise you, you'll look back later, and I wish I had more of this. You'll look back, and you'll go, this is cool, and you're gonna help a lot of other mothers. Moms want, obviously, every mom wants to bring up their kid well, and I think a lot of people just feel helpless, and they think that the school should know. The school doesn't know. I mean, you've been in a school, you've taught, I've taught. They don't know. They're just following rules and regulations, and the teachers are doing the best they can with kind hearts. They have to follow curriculum. In fact, when they start deviating, because they know there's something that kids need, they end up getting in trouble.
Right.
So.
Cool. Excellent. I have notes. I have clarity, which is what I was hoping for. That was my big piece of the puzzle.
I was like doing this with you. You know I do. We'll do it.
Fun.
Well, sooner or later, you and I, I know you were on my coast and with family stuff or whatever. I was like, sooner or-
I was like, Greg, how do we go down to Connecticut? We, that's the one state we didn't touch.
All good. And I'm, at a point, I'll have to get back to your neck of the woods, because I really like it out there. So we'll get there. Well, well, one of these days, we're gonna go on a trip. We keep saying we're gonna, we'll get there.
We are, yes.
All right, Darlene, I'm gonna run off, because I got every one of these to do. This was awesome, and then you let me know what else. So you talk to Greg, and then get back to me, and we'll work on that. Heard if you guys have watched, if you wanted to do a one-on-one live work session, just reach out to me at diane@dianehockman.com. They are surprisingly reasonable and super fun. So, yes, I'll talk to you later, okay?
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.